We got items on second, uh, second reading. Uh, in order to amend and supplement the revised general orders of the city of New Brunswick, Title 10, vehicles in traffic, Chapter 10, that's 16, stop and stand in a parking section, 10, that's 16, Schedule 24, no parking at any time, reference to Ball Street. We have our ordinance on the first reading, in order to adopt a redevelopment plan for abandoned properties scattered sites in the city of New Brunswick. Two, in order to amend and supplement the revised general orders of the city of New Brunswick, Title 10, vehicles in traffic, Chapter 10, that's 16, stop and stand in a parking section, Schedule 25, no parking certain hours, special traffic regulation, reference to Hartenburg Street, High Street, Division Street. Then we have, uh, number three, an ordinance, uh, ordinance of the city of New Brunswick and the county of Middlesex, the state of New Jersey authorizing the city of New Brunswick to grant 0.15 acre easement to public electric, public service, electric and gas, PSENG over a portion of block 703, that's 03 lot, 1.03, as shown on the tax map of the city of New Brunswick, reference to Rabbit River Conservation Area. Then we have resolution, one, approve agenda amendments, two, payroll, three, authorize refund for being taxed help to the city, four, approve request for solicitation of funds requested by Salvation Army for the city, uh, to help the needy community, uh, help the needy in our community, specific dates, uh, November 9th, 2018, December 24th, 2018, and the following dates that we advertised, oh, there it is. Five, authorized tax collection and transfer several taxing utility over payments. Six, approve amendment of resolution, reference, uh, reasons, additional amount of twenty, uh, $20,000 for public works with BMW Construction Company in New Jersey for equipment and labor not to exceed $20,000, approve of this change order will constitute an increase of 20% or more of original contract. Seven, authorize the lease of a copy machine for the police department, front desk for Rico USA, uh, for one Rico model, M, that's 405 SPG copy system, not to exceed $159 per month, commencing December 1st, 2018, ending November 1st, 2022, for 48-month contract, state contract, 40467, 2075, copiers, maintenance, and supplies. Eight, authorize the lease of a copy machine for the police department, identification, uh, identification department, Rico USA, Rico model, M, that's 225 SPG copy system, not to exceed $88 per month, commencing December 1st, 2018, ending November 30, 2022, 48-month contract, state contract, 40467, G, that's 272, 2075, copiers, maintenance, and supplies. Nine, approve, uh, renewal of liquor, uh, liquor license with special ruling for George Veru, inactive liquor license, 1214, 33026010, 2018, 2019. Ten, approve renewal of liquor license with special ruling, uh, for some, for somewhere else inactive liquor license, under 1214, that's 35, that's 074003. Eleven, authorize purchase of the police department under the New Jersey State approved Co-op 65, MCF, CCPS, the Educational Services Commission of New Jersey Pricing System for Celebrity Ford LLC, Field Business, as their Ford, for one, 2018, trans and connect, uh, with, with options, not to exceed $32,000. Twelve, authorize purchase by police department under the New Jersey State approved Co-op 65, MCE, SCCPS, the Educational Services Commission of New Jersey Pricing System for Celebrity Ford LLC, Field Business, their Ford, for one, uh, 2019, Dodge Charger, not to exceed $31,508, $0.10. And we have thirteen, approve request for used city private parking, progressive lot, location from Somerset Street to the George Street, uh, side street, from Lee Avenue, Grimson Avenue, for volunteers picking up garbage along sidewalks, date Saturday, October 27, 2018, time 9:00 AM to 2:00 PM, 14, approve amendment of resolution, reason for additional $25,000, $25,000 for ongoing tax appeals, uh, for the division of assessments with Hogland, Longo, Moran, Ducks, Dukas, uh, LLP, for 2018 special counsel for tax appeals, division of assessments, uh, from $120,000 to $145,000. Fifteen, approve indemnity trust, uh, agreement with the Middlesex County Municipal Union Service Fund, term, January 1st, 2019, to December 31st, 2020, 16, approve amendment of resolution, R, that's 061853, reason additional amount of $29,000, Drifted Allied Trucking LLC, Field Business, Allied Oil, for furnished and delivery diesel fuel for the department of public works, specification number 66518P, amount of $29,000, approve of this change order will constitute an increase of 20% or more of original contract. Seventeen, approve chapter, uh, 159 budget insertion, state of New Jersey Department of Labor and Workforce Development for New Jersey Libraries, uh, Career, Career Connections, amount of $52,000. Eighteen, approve resolution to authorize interlocal services agreement with County of Middlesex for the provision and personnel services, term, November 1st, 2018, to October 31st, 2023, five years. Eight, nineteen, approve amendment of resolution, R, that's 091, reason new dates for crane pickup, for the crane, uh, crane pick, approve relaxation of City Norris, requested by Amquiff Crane, reason for form crane pick at Robert Wood Johnson, uh, University, University Hospital to set the roofing material, date Saturday, October 20, 2018, alternate date, uh, Saturday, October 27, 2018, time 7:00 AM to 3:00 PM. Uh, twenty, approve, uh, request for street closure requested by Old Towne Parish, beginning on St. Joseph Church, 293 Somerset Street, corner of Somerset Street, Maple Street, Lewis Street, and the streets following, for Our Lady of Guadalupe procession, date, uh, December 11, 2018, time 8:00, 8:00 PM to 9:15 PM, police extrude, 20 months, authorize purchase by police department on the state contract, A, that's H129, T, that's 016, police and homeland security, equipment and supplies for Atlantic Tactical Incorporated, for purchase of ammunition, not to exceed $5,758. Twenty-two, authorize execution of professional service contract with CP, CGP, and H LLC, for program manager for housing rehabilitation program, term, two years from November 1st, 2018, October 31st, 2020. Twenty-three, approve resolution to authorize refund of escrow of the St. Peter's Apostle Roman Catholic Church, uh, an amount of $539.2. Twenty-nine, twenty-four, approve resolution to authorize refund of escrow of St. Mary's Mount Virgin Church, uh, amount $2,351.30. Twenty-five, approve relaxation of noise ordinance and road closures, uh, requested by Virgona Crane Incorporated, uh, reason, place a crane on Somerset Street between High Street, Division Street, in order to load roofing materials on the roof of Robert Wood Johnson University Hospital, Saturday, uh, Saturday, October 20, 2018, alternate date, Saturday, October 27, 2018, hours, 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM. Twenty-six, approve relaxation of noise ordinance and street closure requested by J Super Sun Trucking Wrigging Company, reason, place a crane on French Street to set equipment material for Robert Wood Johnson Barnum Hospital, street closure, uh, is French Street from Patterson Street to Joyce Cameron Avenue, date beginning on Friday, November 2nd, 2018, and ten AM, and completed Saturday, November 3rd, 2018, at 11:00 PM. Then we have nothing else, we have public discussion and dates to remember. All right. Clerk, please do as you are called.
Council Vice President Anderson?
Here.
Councilmember Egan?
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar?
Yes.
Councilmember Socorro Ludwig?
Here.
Council President Fleming?
Here. Please be advised that the advice, advice, that the notice of requirements of open public meeting act has been applied and satisfied, and the annual notice which gave sufficient notice of timing, place, and content of all public meetings of municipal clerk of the city of New Brunswick has been filed, the city clerk has placed on the appropriate bulletin board in lobby of the city hall, has had been transmitted to the newspaper, namely, The Home News. Please rise to the place of release.
By diligence to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please stay in full silence for those that have given their lives in defense of this country, and those areas of this country that have been suffering, uh, heat from the storms and devastation, especially in Florida and all other places that have been affected. All right, motion for minutes.
It's supposed to be approved in minutes for member six, chair.
Council Vice President Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Egan?
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar?
Yes.
Councilmember Socorro Ludwig?
Yes.
Council President Fleming?
Yes. Okay, now we ask for correspondence from clerk, is there any?
Yes, there is. Item number one, a copy of the table of equalized valuations for the 2018 tax year from the state of New Jersey Department of the Treasury Division of Taxation. Item number two, a letter from the New Jersey State League of Municipalities in regards to the 103rd Annual League Conference. Item number three, a letter from RTP Environmental Associates, Inc., in regards to the completion of the site remediation. The correspondence will be forwarded to the appropriate department.
Thank you. All right, we have no public hearings, so we'll go to ordinances on first, on second reading, in order to amend and supplement the revised general orders of the city of New Brunswick, Title 10, vehicles in traffic, Chapter 10, that's 16, stop and standing, or parking section, 10, that's 16, Schedule 24, no parking at any time, reference to Ball Street. Would anybody from the public like to speak on this one?
Good evening, Mr. Council, Charles Cradaville, New Brunswick, New Brunswick Today, candidate for mayor, just want to understand what motivated this ordinance.
I think you speak that, Mr. Council President. At the request of the sanitation, well, DPW Sanitation Division, uh, there's a small set, Ball Street, as you know, is a very narrow street, it's one block between Somerset and French Street, it's a one-way direction, it's relatively narrow, uh, further down the street, uh, there's, there are, past the building that's on the faces French, there are a series of houses that are set back, those residents actually have to park partially on the stock, which if we, power, because the logistics are just aren't there, we're just asking for 120 feet from French alongside the building, sometimes there's a car parked in the, uh, sanitation trucks, and the recycling vehicles can't get down the street, so just to facilitate that.
Understood, and I just want to know if any of the residents were consulted about this?
Any residents?
No, they were not, because it doesn't affect the residents on Ball Street, the only, it doesn't even affect the, the business that faces French, there's supposed to be no parking there anyway, because it's just too narrow, if you pull a car there, it's going to block the street, so, but no, they were not. So it does not impact the residents.
Thank you. Anybody else? See none, move to ordinance.
Second. Council Vice President Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Egan?
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar?
Yes.
Councilmember Socorro Ludwig?
Yes.
Council President Fleming?
Yes. And we have ordinance on first reading, uh, ordinance to adopt a redevelopment plan for abandoned properties scattered sites in the city of New Brunswick, move the ordinance setting down Wednesday, November 7th, at 6:30 PM, same date to be out of town.
Second. Council Vice President Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Egan?
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar?
Yes.
Councilmember Socorro Ludwig?
Yes.
Council President Fleming?
Yes. And we have two, an ordinance to amend and supplement the revised general orders of the city of New Brunswick, vehicles in traffic, uh, stop and standing, standing in parking sections, 10, that's 16, 030, Schedule 25, no parking certain hours, special traffic circulation, reference to Hartenburg Street, High Street, and Division Street. Move the ordinance setting down Wednesday, November 7th, at 6:30 PM, same date to be out of town.
Second. Council Vice President Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Egan?
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar?
Yes.
Councilmember Socorro Ludwig?
Yes.
Council President Fleming?
Yes. And we have three, an ordinance, uh, the city of New Brunswick and the county of, uh, Middlesex, state of New Jersey authorizing, the city of New Brunswick grant 0.15 acre easement to the public service, electric and gas, over a portion of block 703, lot 103, as shown on the tax map of the city of New Brunswick, reference to Rabbit River Conservation Area. Move the ordinance setting down Wednesday, November 7th, at 6:30 PM, same date to be out of town.
Second. Council Vice President Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Egan?
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar?
Yes.
Councilmember Socorro Ludwig?
Yes.
Council President Fleming?
Yes. All right, now we have resolutions one through 26, if anybody from the public would like to speak on the resolutions, we have, please, give your name and address, we have five minutes.
Daniel Moore, D.C., so much to add, my question is, uh, thirteen, uh, we collect a volunteer, where do you meet, meet, meet at for the cleanup?
Can you put it up, please?
I'm talking about the, the volunteer for cleaning up, picking up garbage, uh, where would, where do you meet, meet at?
Um, probably, that's the progressive lot, you probably have to, uh, meet with, you know, one of them, because everyone has requested it.
Okay, so you're talking about Jersey Avenue, where the department is?
No, uh, progressive lot, um, somebody there would know, you know, where the volunteers would go, oh, yes, okay.
I'll connect you to the, uh, CPW, but I'll connect you with the people that are running the, the actual street.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening, once again, Charles Cradaville, New Brunswick, New Brunswick Today, candidate, uh, just two resolutions I'd like to ask about today, both are on page four, uh, 101858, the, uh, indemnity trust agreement with the MCMJ, yeah, just wanted to ask if, uh, there's been any calculation as to the, um, amount that the city has saved by using this, uh, insurance fund, by being a part of it recently?
Not for this contract, um, that we're proposing tonight, but three years ago, instead of just doing an automatic renewal, we went out into the marketplace and sought out proposals from, um, let's call it private insurance, and, uh, the GIP was still the better, uh, wager for us, so, um, I would suggest that, uh, the same would be true for the next three years, in my opinion.
Okay, and, uh, 101861 is, uh, interlocal agreement with the county for personnel services, can I understand, is this a new agreement, or a, uh, renewal of existing agreement, and what exactly does it mean for the city?
It's a brand-new agreement, and it, um, allows us to, uh, I'll use the term acquire, um, human resource personnel services from the county in the form of an interlocal agreement, you can, you know, consider the shared services arrangement if you like, but, uh, we think this is a good opportunity to, um, replace a personnel officer who's been in a part-time capacity for two years, but she will retire by the end of the year, um, and, uh, this is a, an arrangement we can negotiate with the county.
Can anybody tell me if the county does this type of thing for other municipalities? Are there other examples?
I'm not aware of that.
This could be.
Could be, but I'm not trying.
And, uh, the name of the person who's going to be retiring?
Howie.
Oh, okay. Any relation to our councilman?
If he wants to answer that.
Yes.
Thank you. Anybody else on the resolution? See none?
Second. Council Vice President Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Egan?
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar?
Yes.
Councilmembers Socorro Ludwig?
Yes.
Council President Fleming?
Yes. All right, we got items for our special council, anybody have any?
Would you be comfortable with the, um, information I gave you, all the, um, Rabbit River Conservation Zone, um, it's one tenth of an acre, it's only going to be an easement, and it allows for PSENG to complete its overhead transmission improvements, as you're making, from the touch and all the way down to bar.
And that's what the COVID-20 conference meeting is about, so it has to be healthy, it'll be healthier. All right, um, this has two things, uh, Tom Pitman was here last week, they're doing a hurricane relief fund for, um, Florida, for the most recent one, for the most recent hurricane relief, uh, we'll have announcements pretty soon, uh, as far as the drop-off spaces, you know, uh, it's not just, like, canned, it's closed, uh, perishable, uh, non-perishable items, um, like picker towels, you know, anything like that, uh, if anybody's interested, we will have the information, I'll try to get it to somebody so we can get the information out of the city. Also, um, last, two weeks ago, we talked about, um, we're going pink for breast cancer awareness, we're still breast cancer awareness month, it's also domestic violence awareness month, and there's a march next week, you know what date that is?
Is there 20, 27?
27.
27, yes, that's why I didn't, I wasn't sure who we're meeting again, so, yes, is it 20?
Yes.
The Arrow March, that would be, 20 years.
20 years, and, because a lot of times we get caught up in, I mean, everything is equal, you know, but a lot of times, uh, we always hear about breast cancer awareness, you know, because a lot of people get to be wearing the pink and stuff like that, but we don't, we want to also make people wear that, it's also domestic violence awareness month, and, which is also a serious issue.
It will be, uh, from 11 to 2, I'm going to meet here about 112 Patterson Street, and then from there, we're going to walk around town, and then we're going to gather there and have some speakers and so forth, so everybody sit back.
Anybody else? All right, we'll now have public discussion, please step forward to the microphone, give your name and address, for record, and please remember the five minutes.
123 Somerset Street, I just hear you talking about donations, and I'm just curious, is there somehow, I'm not able to remember the name, excuse me, uh, donations being collected to help the vice, uh, principal of New Brunswick High School, is there, to help his family out in any way, donation to help his family?
Well, we have, we have said.
Sorry for his loss.
Right.
So, so will something be, uh?
We can talk about it, consider it, I mean, he, he will post it out, it'll be coordinated by the district, school districts.
Okay, thank you, then, also, uh, who did, who would I get in contact for, uh, the streetlights, due to where, you know, it's getting dark earlier now, time would be going back soon, due to where, how would it be dark, where some of our kids are coming home for after-school programs, due to where I've been seeing extremely, a lot of streetlights out, and throughout the neighborhood.
If you can, um, identify the poll numbers, the numbers that are on the poll, you can give them to my office, you can give them to engineering or the mayor's office, and we will call that into PSENG.
So there's no one from the city that can take a ride during, during the evening, due to where I'm not talking about, no, just one light, I'm talking about extremely, a lot of streetlights are out.
There are many people from the city who could do that, if you, you know, I thought you were looking to show us.
Oh, oh, the ones that, Erica, I will, I will speak.
The police department does that routinely, but.
Well, like I said, is many side, I don't think so.
We have any one, yes.
Um, we've actually asked the parking authority, they do it on a, either a weekly or bi-weekly basis, and their nighttime patrol, so they're active at night, uh, and then they turn over the list to the mayor's office on a regular basis, but if you have any specific locations that you're aware of, that would be helpful for us, the more eyes the better.
I would also say, if you have apps that we have recorded, that's the voice phone, right, that you can just, um, now, if you phone, and we'll record any, uh, lights that are out, it'd be easier, if you record it there, and you will have, you will post specifically to the department, you'd like.
Okay, and also, I'd like to get back, uh, due to where we know, I know that summertime is over, and I know the city and the Board of Education, they could not, uh, they did not have enough funds to make sure the children are nice and cool now, okay, we have at least eight, eight months now before the next period comes on, I, 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 can, can I see that the city and the Board of Education, wow, start little by little, what an air conditioner here for this school, this school? You have up to eight, 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 eight months now, due to where, how you said it would cost about a million dollars to.
I think it's more than that. Yeah, I mean, I, that would have to come through the board, I mean, it's, it's, it's a multimillion-dollar project.
You're telling me, uh, uh, between Livingston School and Roosevelt School, that it would cost a million dollars just to put a few air conditioners in?
It's not a few, it's not, you, it's, it has to be up to fire code, it's not like, you just can't put in, because I'm, I'm speaking from experience, you just can't just put a fire, um, uh, air conditioning unit in there, those are older buildings, and if it starts a fire, you couldn't put it in there, if it starts a fire, it's got to be a fire code, there's several things, we just can't, just stick an air conditioner in there, there's a lot involved in that.
I think it's, I mean, I think that the, the concern is a valid one, and I think that people have, all of us, I think that, uh, it's a concern that we all have, but it's, in, in kind of, in a sense, it's out of control of the council at this point, this is something that the Board of Education, the state, who is the one who approves the budget, and there's a process, they have to, um, see if it's something that they could add, whether it's, I guess, for next year's budget, because this one already passed, if I'm, if I'm mistaken, yeah.
They're currently in a budget year.
In the process, yeah, so, so you go back, but that's, there's a process that has to take place, and that's the responsibility, my, to the best of my knowledge, of the Board of Education, to look at it and see, and I'd raise up with the state, if there's any other funding, I think that would be support, you know, I support, yeah, they need some, but there has to be a processing place, and, and to what extent, the council is responsible for that, and we have to look at that also in the city, so, for the, to me, the, the Board of Education needs to first look at it and see if it's something, so advocate on the board and see what it is that they're able to do, and then take it from there, because they're the ones in charge.
Have you went to them and asked them, I mean, usually they have a wish, I mean, excuse me, usually they have a wish list, you know, maybe they have something else on a wish list that they'd rather have instead of their provision.
Well, yes, I have.
Their bathrooms need to be improved, maybe they'd like to have something else, but.
I have spoken to the Board of Education, just like I know a few other, uh, parents have, just like I know, uh, President Fleming, out of your mouth, you said, wow, wow, that anytime, what, that the Board of Education needs help, that the city will help, help.
Well, I said that funds would be, we would, we would make sure nobody was struggling with the funds, and those funds would be made available, as per, like I said, we haven't had the board come to us and say, okay, because they know that there's a process, they haven't come to us and said, okay, air conditioning is our top priority, because they know that there's a process to go through, you know, we've come to the point where we start, or this is not the starting point, this is, you know, goes to the board first, and there's like, it's a lot of steps to do that.
Let's face it, nobody wants, we'd all love to have the kids, I'd love to have a, a car, big air conditioning, top-of-the-line bathrooms, ready school in the state of New Jersey, believe me, you have no idea that the, the buildings that some of these kids live in, that are, that are a million times worse off than some of the schools that we have in New Brunswick. I mean, everybody has a wish list, everybody would love to see a perfect, a perfect world out there, but especially in the Upper School District, if everything is budgeted, as far as how much we can do on improvements, without going through the school development authority. So, like I said, we would all sit here, I don't think anybody on this panel would wish, everybody could have air conditioning, great bathrooms, and all these things, anyone would love to have it, we, we try to get it with every new school that we build here in New Brunswick, so we'll try, we'll try, we'll try, we're always trying to get new schools built, we need three or four new builds.
Yes, which schools?
Uh, the two oldest, I think that would be Livingston School and Roosevelt School.
Yeah, our, our.
Yes, those two schools mainly, yes. And I think, uh, I, I forget how, is it Lincoln, Lincoln School, the one that's right across from Robert Wood Johnson, that's where the parent came in a month ago, saying, well, her son comes home with fever, because it's too extremely, too hot in there, where, that was about a month ago when the parent came in. Then also, I would like to get back to, uh, garbage cleaning, due to where, at the last meeting, I was complaining about garbage around the city, saying that the city, the garbage, uh, workers, due to where they need extremely, extreme help with cleaning up New Brunswick, due to where, I meant, it's really messy, that was after the last meeting, Mr. Jones had explained to me that, wow, I can speak to Ms. Donna about doing volunteer cleanup, I do see you have it for one area now, but I'm just saying, before it gets whole, I think plenty more, I will thank you for telling, telling me that, that, due to where you, they will provide what garbage bag, pick, pickups now, just, like, wondering, will you advertise, let's say, we come to a date, would you advertise it?
We have a whole program based on, uh, clean, uh, block captains, uh, that happens at the New Brunswick Public Library, there's a program that runs, uh, almost the entire.
Okay, thank you. There's also different organizations, you know, that they have done, and they continue to do regularly, Lino City Community, um, Trinity Square, there's a church, tentacles of church on, on Commercial Avenue that, ongoing, Esperanza, those ongoing things, so, uh, and they always, you know, Donna Kupal is very, very good, uh, providing, she's excellent, uh, providing all they need, see the materials that the community might need, so if you have a group that you put together, that you'd like to do, and she's the person to go to and ask, and then you could start doing the same thing, as, you know, and I think it's great, because it takes ownership, we take ownership of our parks, and we take ownership of where we live.
Oh, yes.
So, it's an excellent idea, and like I said, she's excellent, she, I, I know everybody has, you know, they were praises with her and the staff, when they go out there with all the, uh, equipment and all the help that they get when they, they clean up in the communities.
Yes, and then also, I will thank the, the city, the two workers that did come over and cleaned Somerset Street, and now that they did clean it, I, I, I knew they are, I'm not sure what the one-way street there, but yes, due to where they did come and do a very good job of cleaning over there, like, last, last week, and, uh, I just hope, that you can tell the residents to start taking care of their, 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 um, due to where, I meant, it's getting very nasty out there in certain areas, and like I said, sure, that's right up my alley, I, I love the volunteer to clean the, so, yes, I will get the information on that, and then, my, my last thing, that's where, is, uh, Boyd Park and the Park by Walgreens, are they going to follow the sunset rules, where after sunset, that the park will be closed?
We always have, except for special events, at least at Boyd.
So what about the, uh, the park right by Walgreens?
What happens there after dark?
Due to where, I know you did have a complaint about too many people sitting over there being drunk, drunk. being drunk, drunk, and harassment, so is that park going to be closed a, as well from sunset?
On, on the books, it is to be closed at sundown, and police enforcement is the, you know, is the solution if anyone is in there after hours who shouldn't be.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening once again, Governor, Councilor Charles Cradaville, I'm a New Brunswick resident, editor of New Brunswick Today, candidate for mayor, have just a few questions and a statement, would like to ask, uh, you know, through the chair, could you ask Captain Miller if he's received my two, uh, requests for information about two different incidents?
Yes.
Okay. Can you ask Captain Miller, then, uh, since, I, I don't believe he's responded to either them, what happened at 14 Jersey Avenue on Friday night, there's a rather large police action there?
Yep, I'm not speaking about that one.
Okay, so no, no information is going to be made available to the public at this time about what happened Friday night at 14 Jersey Avenue?
Not at this time.
Okay. Uh, can I assume the same for the incident Monday at 75 Delfield Street?
Yes.
Okay. Any idea when information will be shared to the public about these two incidents?
I'm not ready.
And, uh, through the chair for Councilman Egan, uh, is it true that, uh, one of your children works for the New Brunswick Development Corporation?
Not anymore, she did.
Okay, and can you tell me when, uh, he or she stopped working for?
Was this an interrogation? What, what is this, what is this in relevance to you?
Uh, it's, uh, in, in relation to your financial disclosure statements, and want to, uh, understand if you had, uh, you know, any immediate family members on the payroll of one of the city's biggest developers who the city's currently involved in a major deal with.
Okay, and why do, that, who, who are in conversation, yes, why does it go to school?
Okay, and can you tell me when that, that ended?
I don't know.
Okay. So, so I noticed it's on your financial disclosure form, this year, so, uh, did it end this year, did it end last year?
I don't know.
Okay. Um, that's all I have as far as questions go, I did just want to say, you know, in all sincerity, uh, that regardless of the outcome of the election, I look forward to working with all of you to make our community a better place, and I hope that everybody out there, no matter who they're voting for, will vote, because your vote is your voice, and it's very important that if you have that right, to exercise it, and so I hope everybody will vote in November 6th election who has that right, thank you, have a great day.
Anybody else?
Hello, my name is Brendan Athlin, I'm a resident of New Brunswick at the Colony House, I just wanted to thank you, Councilwoman Escobar, for raising attention to the domestic violence issue, obviously, this is a huge issue in the country right now, if we look at our president of the United States, this exists at all levels of government, and I've been very encouraged to see, both in the Democratic Party and in the Republican Party, people holding themselves accountable, I'm extremely excited for this march, and thank you very much for bringing it up.
Thank you. Anybody else for the public? See none? Move to the chair.
Second. Council Vice President Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Egan?
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar?